The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Bristol Board of Education meeting for August 15, 2018. Would you all please rise to the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is a memorance for Keith Edward Dubay, who was the chairman of the Board of Education from 1976 to 1979. He was also a Bristol representative to the legislature. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. You receive, when you receive your packets, the minutes from July 11 of 18. Is there any changes or corrections or additions or modifications to the minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And abstentions? We have two abstentions. And motion passes. We'll now move on to committee reports. Our first committee report would be student achievement. Commissioner Grobowski is going to be pinching it in for Commissioner Dubey this evening.
Gaffinary one. Brief report. The Student Achievement Committee met last Wednesday, August 8. Up for discussion was a request to revise the high school automation and robotics curriculum. Last time the curriculum was revised, or edited, was 2005. And obviously, technology has changed quite a bit since then. In addition, the dates for our showcases for our schools where student achievement data is presented to us has been announced. And elementary and K-8 schools are on Wednesday, September 26 at 6:30. And the high schools are Thursday, September 26 at 6:30. I don't know the locations, but...
To be determined.
To be determined. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grobowski. Mr. O'Brien, personnel?
Personnel committee met, and we discussed the tremendous success we're having with working with City Hall and consolidating operations and having joint operations in the areas of insurance, technology, and facilities management. All's good. One happy family, group hugs all around. Great progress.
That's great. Glad to hear it. Next, we will go to a policy. Commissioner Taylor.
Policy met this past Monday, the 13th. And we discussed, had a great conversation about student data privacy and a few other policies that will be on the next month's agenda that we'll talk more in detail about and go on.
Okay. Finance, Commissioner Vibber.
Good evening. And similarly, the Personnel Committee is having kumbaya moments with City Hall. So is Finance. It's really very nice. Everybody is working very well together on both sides. As far as the finances here, things are looking very, very good for the general operating budget for the schools. It looks like we are going to finish with a small deficit of $412,503. That's yes, but it may actually go lower depending upon the displaced students grant. We are expecting that to come in for students from Puerto Rico. We just don't know when it's coming in. If it does come in, we're estimating our deficit will go down probably another $270,000. Very good news on the food services. The last couple of months proved to be much better than we expected them to be. And we are finishing with a surplus of a little over $35,000. And I'd like to invite Mrs. Brown, Dr. Dieter, if you have more to add.
Good evening. No, I think you did a great job.
Oh, thanks.
I can update that number just a little bit because over at City Hall, they applied the small refund that we had received for tuition. Received a check just yesterday morning for $4,131. So that negative 412 number is actually 408-372. Like you said, once we received the displaced students grant from the state, which is an expected 273,125, that will bring our deficit to negative 135,247, which is outstanding. It's within 13 one-hundredths of a percent of our original operating budget. And I really don't think we could finish any better. So that's very exciting.
Well, actually, we can.
Well, we could, a tiny bit.
We can if we're successful in pursuing the mistake that our consultant made in submitting the excess cost grant. And it's hopeful that we will receive some or all of what was not given to us by statute. And if so, we would actually have a surplus. So we can do better.
That would be excellent.
And I think major kudos go out to all of the staff members who really adhered to the freeze.
I think it was the chairman of the Finance Committee and her unrelenting focus on reducing the deficit.
You're right, Commissioner O'Brien. As well as, and I alluded to this earlier, as well as to the wonderful working relationship that the Controller's Office and the folks here, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, Jill, and the people in her office, as well as the Special Services Office.
Shouldn't have seen.
Have worked very well together and found ways to save. As well as, I mean, it's no secret, there were some issues. We had a lot of turnover and volatility over the past few years. And things have gotten much, much better. And a lot of the problems have been fixed, corrected. So we're doing very well. We're very happy about that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have nothing extraordinary to report this evening. Our new enrollment continues to trend at about 20% of new enrollment eligible for special education services. That's been consistent as long as I've been reporting to you. So it is a number that we're continuing to track and will update with the fluctuations if and when that situation arises. Our enrollment for our projected enrollment of eligible students at this point in time, looking to the start of school in less than two weeks, is 1,604 students are eligible for services in Bristol. That's approximately just below 20% of students of overall enrollment. You'll see on your consent agenda an item for the IDEA grant. I would just add that we applied for and received the same level of funding that we did last year for the IDEA grant. And the total, there's two parts, 611 and 619, and the two-part total is $1,941,181. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
If that concludes your report, we'll turn to Commissioner Enns for operations.
Thank you. Chairman Wilson, the Operations Committee met on Monday. We took up two items, both of which appear later in the agenda. One of them was, what's the technical term? Not abandoning.
Discontinuance.
Discontinuance of a dead-end street. And a great grant that Stafford School received, and they're rebuilding an outdoor community, outdoor learning community.
The next item is my report, and I just have one item. And I guess as my capacity as Vice President of Professional Development at CAE, I have to push the CAPS CAE convention, which will be November 16 and 17. I would encourage you all to get your reservations into Susan Everett. If you get them in before August 27, we get a reduced rate. So I'd encourage you to do that. We're pretty excited this year to have a featured speaker on Friday, Dr. Brackett from Yale, who has established a clinic down at Yale to study emotional learning. And we think it's really a coup for us to get him. He's working with over 1,500 public schools and charter schools in the United States and Connecticut. And he has established a lot of learnings that I think he can share with all of us about emotional learning and how it's tied to learning and mental health. So it's a very timely topic, and we're very pleased to have him be our featured speaker on Friday. And the delegate assembly will be the day before for anybody who wishes to attend that. It usually starts around 2 o'clock on the Thursday before the convention. That's where CAE goes through all its policies and initiatives that they use to lobby the legislature. So that would conclude my report. Now I'll turn it over to the superintendent for her report.
Good evening, Commissioners. Actually, I got to listen to Dr. Brackett this morning, and you don't want to miss it. He's got great information, and he's also very humorous. So the delivery is really good. If you recall, in mid-June, many of you participated in a session that was facilitated by CAE talking about beginning a community conversation about equity, diversity, and bias. The students in our school come from diverse backgrounds, including speaking primary languages that are not English, having skin color ranging from pink to black, and students who are homeless and those who live in apartments and private homes. So to best serve our learners, we need to start engaging in conversations that will help us all reduce any biases, even if we don't think we have them. We were taken through some exercises that show that no matter how colorblind you think you are, you have innate biases in you. And we need to, as a community of learners, including our Board of Education, our teachers, our community members, come together. And we're looking to form a planning committee that will have 10 to 15 members that include board members, teachers, students, elected officials, and anyone else, frankly, who is interested in the planning part. And then after we do the planning, we'd like to engage in community conversations. And so that planning committee would then branch out. We can use staff from CAE to facilitate, or we can choose to do that on our own. Later on in the agenda, there's an affirmation that this is something that the Board of Education wants to enter into. And I urge you to please engage in that conversation. We're about to begin the 2018-2019 school year. Very hard for me to imagine. We have a very busy week ahead. On Monday, we'll hold our first administrative council, where we'll be reviewing the academic successes of our students, because celebrations are a really important part of our work. We'll take a deep dive into our emergency preparedness guide. We'll be aligning our continuous improvement cycle with school improvement plans. Learn how to use a new online teacher evaluation tool, and refresh folks on the administrator evaluation plan. On Tuesday, we kick off the New Teacher Academy with a morning of introductions, including our board chair. You're all welcome to come and say hello to our, I believe, 26 new teachers, although we still have some more that we're interviewing as the week goes on, as they join us and become part of the Bristol family. And so their introduction to us includes learning about not only what's in their school building, but how to access their curriculum, how to use our email system, all of those things that make it easier for you to just come on in and start teaching. The following Monday, convocation, which is our welcome back to all of our staff, is at Bristol Central. We begin at 8:30 in the morning. You're all welcome. I wouldn't arrive at 8:30, though, because otherwise you will not find a parking spot. So plan to come a little earlier than that. Our theme last year was "What is Your Story?", where we had an alumni from Bristol Central and the teacher who inspired him to become a writer and a very successful writer. And this year, our story continues. And we've invited Commissioner Grobowski to talk about his story as a student in the Bristol schools, as a graduate of Bristol Eastern High School. And now, his story has continued. He's going into his senior year at Central Connecticut, and he's going to become a social studies teacher. And I think that the challenges he has overcome will inspire our teachers to understand that a book doesn't always look like its cover. And we look forward to that. Thank you.
Our next items on the agenda is our consent agenda, which takes us 6-1 through 6-2. Does anybody wish to pull anything out of the consent agenda? Anybody wish to pull anything out of the consent agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, item 6-1 through 6-2.
So moved. Second.
It's properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now move to public comment. Public comment is the opportunity for our public to provide feedback to the Board of Education. You're welcome to speak on anything that's on our agenda, as well as anything that's not on our agenda. We will get, later on in the agenda, we will get to do some deliberated items. And if you wish to speak on those deliberated items at that time, you may as well. So I see two items for speakers to speak, and so I probably should give you a little preface on these. I was perusing the newspaper after getting back from vacation, and I saw that two young students had written letters to the editor. And then, upon getting to the byline, I see that I recognize the names and realize that they were my grandchildren. And so I have nothing to say that I inspired their content, but I did think that, we've talked a lot about student voice and providing student voice at Boards of Education meetings. And we hear a lot about our, you know, our students in high school, but very seldom do we hear from our students in elementary school. So I think their mother is going to come up with them and help them read their letters to the editor, or they're going to do it on their own. But you can come to the microphone and...
May I step stool?
Okay. You want to introduce yourself, Gianna?
My name is Gianna Zalvar, and I'm nine years old. There is something that I want to change about my education here in Bristol. When I was at school in South Windsor, we had Spanish class. My father is from a Hispanic country. I speak a little bit of Spanish, and I love speaking it. I moved to a new school, West Bristol School. At West Bristol School, Spanish class is not available for my grade level. I want Spanish class to be for kindergarten through high school. I hope Bristol considers this change because I love Spanish.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Victoria Zalvar. And I am six years old. I've been reading National Geographic kids magazines with my mom. I have a recent edition was all about how our planet is, how our planet is an amazing place to live, but it needs our help. So I want to share with you, the Bristol community, some ideas that I learned about to help protect the planet. One, instead of buying new clothes, reuse hand-me-downs. Shop at consignment stores. Unplug, two, unplug phone and laptop chargers when it's not in use. Three, open your windows and turn on the fan instead of blasting the air conditioning. Four, always throw trash in a can so garbage doesn't harm wildlife. Five, do not release balloons outside, or they can end up entangling ocean animals or being mistaken for food. Six, release paper, recycle paper and plastic. Seven, use reusable metal straws or paper versions. Eight, use the black back of paper or buy recycled paper. Nine, conserve water when you shower. Brush your teeth and wash dishes. Ten, don't feed wildlife because it makes them more dependent on humans. If everyone can take these actions like I am, we can help save the planet together.
Thank you, ladies. You know, I'm suspecting that the mother had a little initiative behind this, but I think what it does point out is we start this persuasive writing at a very young age, and our school's much younger than we used to as we've adopted Common Core. So thank you for your input, ladies. I don't know that we can fix either of those issues immediately, especially the Spanish one would be a very challenged budgetary issue for us to overcome. But we certainly hear you, and if we ever in the opportunity, we'll try to take advantage of some of those ideas.
And maybe as they get older, one or both of them may be on the Bristol Board of Education and help implement policies later on.
Okay. We will now move on to our deliberated items. Our first one is, or deliberated items or just a leadership team report. The first item is a hiring report from Dr. Gallaway.
You can save electricity by walking down the stairs.
(Laughter).
Of course, they'd have to find the way out, going down the stairs.
Do as I say, not as I do.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'll give you a quick rundown on the vacancies that we still have open currently. To date, we've hired, filled 26 certified positions. What's left open right now at Chippins, there's a math, language arts, the citywide positions in special ed, psychologist, sped teacher, speech and language pathologist, PE and wellness. There's a part-time PE teacher and another PE teacher at Stafford. And then there are several part-time music positions. And there's one T-Saw, but that person I know is in the pipeline. So Larry's been very...
I'm interviewing them tomorrow.
Right. So I'm very confident that the certified positions will be filled. The part-times are challenging, but we'll work very hard to fill all certified positions. That concludes my report, pending your questions.
I lost track. About how many do we have to hire then? I just, you ran through it, but...
So we have 26, 29, probably about 34. And there is a, I was contacted by the Department of Education, they're going to have one more. I've gone to all of the recruitment sessions that they've had, and they're going to have another one this month in New Britain at Slade Middle School. And hopefully, if Mike hasn't, Dr. Dieter hasn't filled his positions yet, I'll be able to contact some candidates there.
And sir, am I correct that next month we'll get a report, a more detailed report, including the cities that the new staff...
That is correct. And I can tell you, because I know, I knew, if I was a Ben person, I would have won some money. I said, somebody's going to ask that. So about out of the 26, about 10 so far are from the city of Bristol. And several folks have come through the Bristol school system.
I did see that on one of the resumes. That was as good as Dr. Moreau calls them, the side...
Our secret weapons.
Right.
Could I ask a quick question?
Sure.
How many part-time music positions are still open?
Three. And I'll just give you the locations, Mountain View, Chippins, and Northeast.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is what Karen spoke about earlier, about the discontinuance of Arcadia Road. So Karen, do you want to give us that motion?
Sure. I move the Board of Education approves the discontinuance of the western end of the existing Arcadia Road right of way from the western property line of Lot 2.
I'll second that.
That motion has been properly seconded. Are there any questions? This gets forwarded on to the city. Is that who requested this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I don't sense we have any questions on this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Our next item is 8.3, Stafford School Outdoor Learning Community. Karen, you want to provide that motion as well?
Sure. Kind to talk about it a little bit. It's such a neat idea. And we'll go on quick.
Yeah.
So Chris Irvin, the principal at Stafford, came to the meeting Monday night. One of, really, a sort of a temporary, a student, a behavioral specialist, a student, applied for a grant with Lowe's, the home improvement company.
That would be Mrs. Joe, who's sitting right there.
And, you know, took it upon herself to apply for this grant, which was awarded by Lowe's. And then it just kind of created this snowball. The idea was to build an outdoor reading garden, was the initial idea. And one of the parents happens to be the office manager, one of the PTO, PTA parents at Stafford happens to be the office manager for Mizzy Construction in Plainville. And she went to work and got her boss to donate labor and materials. So, because the project they had in mind was in excess of the $4,000 that Lowe's had awarded. So I think we're going to end up with like an $11,000 outdoor education space at the back of the school. So, thank you. All right. So...
So I think we have to have a motion to accept the grant from Lowe's.
Yeah, I'm getting there. I'm scrolling, scrolling. Actually, I don't see the motion, so I'll just, I move that we accept the Lowe's educational grant to build the outdoor learning community at Stafford School.
I'll second.
We have a second by Kristen. Any questions or comments? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The culture, equity, and excellence conversation is the next item on your agenda, 8.4. I think Dr. Moreau, you know, gave you a good summary of that. So we wanted to have the board just approve that, creating this planning committee to go forward to facilitate this community conversation.
Commissioner, Chairman Wilson, as a point of order, I just want to have some clarity on this. If I'm not mistaken, this was added to the agenda?
No. Well, it was...
Revision?
It wasn't the original, but it was in, we issued a revision to the agenda within the 24 hours.
Within 24 hours. And that was mine.
Well, outside the 24 hours. Excuse me. It was revised in time.
Notwithstanding, I'd like to put forward a motion to table this till our next meeting. It's a deliberated item. I think it's something that requires some input from the public. And in my opinion, it would be better to table this until our next meeting when we have the ability for the public to comment on this, as they may not have been notified about the change.
Okay.
I'll second.
I'm confused.
I just made a motion to...
Okay. So motions are made and seconded table. So that would be, what we'd be voting on is to...
Postpone.
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 Discussion?
I don't believe there's discussion on postponement, is there?
It's a motion. Yes.
Okay. Some motions you don't discuss, you just vote on them. Okay. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, excuse me. What kind of input do you think?
I will say there's other reasons as well. I missed that CAE experience that I think is also driving this. So I don't have much activities to offer to this. I don't believe Kristen was part of that as well. Commissioner Dubey is not here, who was, you know, another representative that would have experienced that. And, you know, personally, even if we go forward to this right now, I would be in a position to abstain. I don't want to rule it out by hand. I think it's a fair thing for not only this board, but especially for the public, to know that we're talking about changes in how we go forth with policy. When we put new policy on... When we put new policy onboard, we go through Policy Committee, and then we come through this Board of Education, and there's plenty of time for people to look at this.
Just a clarification.
To me, it feels like it's come out of left field, and that's my opinion.
If I could just mention that that meeting was public, and we did have members of the public that participated in the meeting with us. So I understand that some of you couldn't make it, but the public was invited, and some of the public was actually there.
But the public, in my opinion, has not been notified that we're now going to take action or potentially implement something like this, even if it's just a planning committee. Not the way I would, you know, prefer to do it. If it was on the original agenda, I probably would let's have the debate, but that's, again, my opinion. That's why I asked for the point of order, because clearly, there's a 24-hour notice period before, or we wouldn't even be able to do this. But we're pretty close to that 24. I didn't have a timestamp on my email when I got it, so I know I got it yesterday. So it was a surprise to me.
About 4:07.
I'm sure I did. But again, as I re-prepared for this meeting, I happened to look at this and notice this today. I don't, I don't think that's the way we should deliberate any item, regardless of what it is.
Okay. I think we've heard you from you. Does anybody else want to speak to this table? It's supposed, speak on the postponement and the motion.
I'd just like to say Mr. Cagiano's confusing me.
Well, I think I heard Mr. Cagiano say some things that I think are not quite accurate. This is not going to be a policy body. It's a facilitating a community conversation, is all it is. And hearing from the different segments of our community that maybe have not been heard from before, so there's no action that this body is going to take.
Then why are we putting it up as a motion? And what are we putting forth?
We're putting forth the creating of a planning committee to have that planning committee get trained by Cabe or someone else to facilitate this community conversation, because there's such, it can be emotional issues, and we thought it would be best if we got some professional training before we conducted that. And so we thought the board should weigh in on that and vote on the creation of this planning committee. So we have a motion on the floor to postpone. So everybody realizes that if you vote yes, then you're postponing this till next month, and if you say no, then we go back to a motion if someone wishes to make one. Does everybody understand what you're voting on? Okay. All in favor of the motion? Why don't we do a roll call, I guess, because I'm guessing it's going to be not unanimous. So you want to do the roll call? Ms. Everett? Mrs. Everett?
Ms. Shaw-Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Chris Grabowski?
No.
Ms. DeLavere?
No.
Ms. Whitaker?
No.
Ms. Shetland?
No.
Ms. Shetland?
No.
Ms. Shetland?
Yes.
Ms. DeLavere?
Yes.
Chairman Wilson?
I'm going to say yes.
4-4.
4-4?
I think that's broken by the chairman.
What's that?
I think that is being broken by the chairman.
No, I voted, we have, Jen is not here, so it's a 4-4 vote.
Try to reach a vote.
So, well, actually, the motion fails because it didn't carry. So now, we would entertain a motion to create a planning committee to establish agendas for cultural equity and excellence conversations.
I will make that motion. I move that we create a planning committee to establish agendas for culture, equity, and excellence in conversations.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Tina, a second?
Okay.
All right. Do you, who wants to speak first? Mr. O'Brien?
I've been very disappointed in any presentation or coordination by Cabe in terms of what they've done when they've come out to facilitate meetings, and I would hope that, as Dr. Moreau suggested, we do not use Cabe or find an alternative that is more productive and helpful and useful.
Okay. Anybody else wish to speak on the motion? Yes.
I just want to continue your clarification. The purpose of this motion is for us to reach out to the public and involve them in this conversation and this activity. We all know that we, regardless of when we post our agenda, Cheryl comes to the Board of Ed meetings, and she's the only person in the audience who's not paid to be here on a regular basis. So the purpose of this committee, because posting an agenda does not generate seats in the audience, but not in my experience in seven years on the Board of Education. Creating this committee is going to create the outreach that will contact the public and get them involved, so...
I just wanted to say that, to clarify, that the motion to postpone really doesn't have any bearing on anybody's agreement with the cause. I personally feel that I did not realize that my failure to attend that workshop meant that I would be ignorant about a deliberate, a deliberated item, because I didn't know there was going to be a deliberated item until 4:41 PM yesterday. And I just feel like I don't know anything, because I couldn't attend the workshop, and I would be very interested in finding that out. And had I known it was going to result in a deliberated item at a meeting, and I couldn't be at that workshop, I would have at least taken the time to pursue one of the commissioners who was there and gotten the information so that I felt that I could make an informed vote. That's really the only reason why.
Any else which to speak on the motion?
I would like to just add one little point to that as well. The only commissioner from the Republican Caucus that was there was Jen Doobie. She's not at this meeting either. That is the main focus that I had intended when we asked to table this motion. I hate to talk about hearsay, but I may lean a little bit towards Commissioner O'Brien's statement, that what I heard about the Cabe presentation, I wasn't that comfortable with. So it's very difficult for me to make a decision to even put a committee together or a planning commission if I'm not real comfortable with that material. So I'm going to have a harder time voting on this, certainly in the affirmative. An abstinent or a no might be an appropriate vote, but that's, I think, you know, Commissioner Giannone made the best point. We are now putting a motion forth and putting potential policy changes or a committee together with not a bipartisan even knowledge of what it's all about.
May I?
Please.
Commissioner Cagiano, I'd like to think, and I believe it to be the case, that reading what this motion is, agendas for culture, equity, et cetera, I'd like to think that we all around this table believe that that's an important issue. There's a lot going on in our country right now, in our city, in our state, that along this line, that some of these things definitely need to be discussed, especially as a Board of Education. And I would like to make a suggestion, and I understand maybe Cabe is not the right way to go. I get that. But I would like to make a suggestion, and I'm making this in a sincere manner, that you volunteer to be on this planning committee, because you are concerned about this, you're concerned about how this is happening. So, seriously, be on the committee. Maybe that would...
I would potentially accept that.
I mean, that may, you have some say, and you have more understanding of it.
Let's direct your comments to the chair, please.
I'm sorry.
So I think we've all had an opportunity to speak, unless someone who has not spoken wishes to speak. And I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Motion carry. We now go to curriculum revisions.
The first reading of the Automation and Robotics curriculum was made at the Student Achievement Committee meeting, and Dr. Carbone is going to take any questions.
Good evening. On August 8th, the first reading of the Automation and Robotics curriculum was presented by Mrs. Fortin. The last time this curriculum was revised was in 2005. The broad goals of the course ensure that students understand the history, development, and application of machine control and automation in robotics. Hands-on activities are designed to develop introductory skills necessary for students to design, create, and test robots and machines. Students will also learn the basics of programming for robotic behaviors and computerized numerical machine control, while developing an understanding of the electrical principles and logic. This course will be a second of three-course pathway leading to a manufacturing design course that will allow students to earn a certification in Master Cam, which is a desirable certification in the manufacturing industry. If there are no questions, I would recommend for approval, or your approval.
Someone?
Second.
Okay. We've had a properly made motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carry.
Thank you.
We don't have any old business. I don't believe we have any new business information. We'll start on my left. It's Kristen.
I have no new information.
Okay. No?
Nothing.
Joe? Commissioner O'Brien? Councilman Kelly? Any liaison reports? We'll go, start this way. No liaison reports?
It's August.
It's August? Having no other business to come before this meeting, I now hereby call us adjourned.
Just have one question. Is the new dean of students at Chippins still present by any chance? Apparently not.
No.
Isn't it normal that a new administrator is presented to the board? Okay. Apparently not. Hopefully, she'll make an appearance in September.
Could be vacation. That's kind of the year.
We're here.
She's here? Oh, I don't see her. Okay. But Dr. Carbone is going to, I didn't see her at the end there.
We are pleased to introduce to you Samantha Sarley, coming from us, to us from New Haven. She will be the on-call administrator and the supervisor of Fine Arts this coming fall.
Pleasure to meet you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. Thank you. Oh, okay. Sorry. No, I thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited to start. I'm like at my, biting my nails. I'm like, oh, do I have access to my email? Can I do this? No, but I really appreciate being here and being offered this position. I know it's new, and we're bringing together two departments that have been separated. So it's an exciting embarkment to start, and I really appreciate everything. So thank you guys so much.
Welcome.
Welcome.
are now adjourned.